All right, it's seven oh two, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. We have a somewhat complicated agenda tonight. One of the things that's first and foremost is I'm gonna ask for a motion to recess the Selectmen's meeting so that we can take up the public hearing on the town and Board of, I'm sorry, the First Selectmen's and the Superintendent's recommended spending plans for the town for fiscal year twenty-three. Can I have a motion from a member of the Board to recess the meeting?
Selectman Muska will move to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maiden, seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are in recess at seven oh three P M. I'm now gonna call to order the public hearing on the First Selectmen's and Superintendent's spending proposals to our respective boards, and I'll read the public hearing notice. In accordance with East Windsor Town Charter, Section eight dash four D one A, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education shall hold a public hearing on Thursday, February third at seven P M via Zoom. The Board is encouraged comments from the public on the Board of Education and Town General Government twenty-two, twenty-three budgets. Chairman Reckley.
Yes. Thank you for Selectman Bowser, I'm now going to call to order the Board of Education's special meeting to, with the town for the, going over the Superintendent's budget.
Thank you, madam. So the public hearing is open. By mutual agreement, the Superintendent, Superintendent and I have decided that I should go first on the town side. And I'm happy to do that, I just wanna set up the proposal. That one. Okay. So tonight's my opportunity and privilege to put together and share with you what I consider to be the spending priorities for the town for the next fiscal year. But before we do that, I wanna start with kind of a look at the demographics in the community. According to the Connecticut Data Collaborative, the twenty-nineteen median, median household value in East Windsor is two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars. That's the most recent data set that's available. Under our current mill rates, the median household property tax obligation would be five-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Under the proposals you're gonna hear tonight, the median household property tax obligation on their homes would raise to five-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. This is, is exclusive of any changes in motor vehicle taxes, because that information will be, will change on whether it's a commercial vehicle or a tri-axle or residential vehicle, whatever. Median household income is seventy-six thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. We have four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five households. Forty-six percent of those are, are family households. Forty-six percent are married households. Four percent are schools, and eighteen of those represent seniors who are living alone. Those numbers don't add up to hundred percent because some people fall into multiple categories. So looking at the population breakdown, I wanted to, to look at our age population. We have six-hundred-and-eighty-two people who are under five years old. We have one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-five people who are what would be considered school age, which is between five and nineteen years old. We have seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-twelve people who are of a working age, which is between twenty years old and sixty-five years old, and our senior population is one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-six people. This is called a mountain chart. It shows where town tax dollars have gone over time. Two things I would point out, the shaded area here is where it's recommended to go in the next fiscal year. The, the pink spike you see here is representative of the added appropriation that was done a couple of years ago to pay, to pay off some of our outstanding debt. So we took a proposal to the voters, asked their acquiescence in terms of, of that added appropriation to pay down debt. They agreed, and this shows that we spent the money the way we said we were going to. This data shows growth in the grand list over time. Since I took office, the grand list has grown by more than fifty million dollars. Our grand list is now over one billion dollars. Grand list valuation though is broken into three categories: real property, motor vehicles, and personal property. This chart shows the grand list distribution between those categories since I took office. One thing that I wanna point out is the slow but steady progression away from a reliance on real estate. That means less of the tax burden is being shouldered by homeowners in the community. I asked the assessor to dig a bit deeper into the breakdown of real estate. So, real estate is comprised of two things: residential real estate and commercial and industrial real estate. You can see here once again, a slow and steady incremental walk away from a residential dependence, which substantiates that we're asking less of the tax burden to be by, by taxpayers and homeowners. This slide shows our budgeted versus actual revenues and expenditures since fiscal year seventeen. Again, that orange bump you see in fiscal year eighteen is reflective of the three-and-a-half-million-dollar added appropriation that was done to pay off certain bonds early. This slide shows the distribution by percentage of where I'm recommending town government funds be appropriated. In the current year, the average homeowner pays five-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars in property taxes on their home. Under my proposal and the proposal from the Superintendent, that number would rise to five-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. A difference of one-hundred-and-twelve dollars per year for the average home in East Windsor. One-hundred-and-twelve dollars. This slide shows the difference what the average taxpayer will pay for each of the functions on the town side of the budget under this proposal. So you can see, we're gonna be asking six dollars more for general government. Five dollars more for public safety, nine dollars more for public works, four for community services, nine for benefits, ten for debt, nine dollars less, I'm sorry, eleven dollars less for capital, and nine dollars more for contingency. So now we're actually showing people not just what their tax obligation is going to be, but specifically what functions of town government we're gonna spend that added money on. So let's look at the, some of the functions a little bit deeper. General government consists of most departments in Town Hall excluding the Building Department, most boards and commissions, legal costs, property insurance, activities and fees, I T functions, and the registrars of voters. So here are some of the specifics as to, to things that we're looking to increase in those departments in this function. So under the Selectmen's budget, postage is expected to rise by thirty-two-hundred dollars. Under the planning budget, professional services is rising by twenty-thousand dollars, which is to keep a consultant on a twelve-month basis. A portion of, of the funding to cover that was offset by reducing the Economic Development Commission's request for a professional consultant, which turned out to be redundant because we have one already, and now we're just using the funding that they were requesting to support the, the work that's already being done. Under activities and fees, cemeteries are recommended to go up by ten thousand, which is partially offset by reductions in East Windsor Health and Wellness, the Fort Town Fair, and Connecticut Main Street Center. I would point out that the town of Winchester was just in the news for doing the same thing that we are in terms of contracted services for economic development, and at the same cost. Winchester is similar to East Windsor in terms of population, but they have about thirty percent fewer businesses than we do. Our I T costs are going up driven by increases in professional services, software licensing, and equipment purchases. Our liability auto and property insurance is going up by five thousand dollars. Also included in my recommendation is funding for the newly formed Arts and Culture Commission. I'm recommending that they be funded at a level of forty-five-hundred. My recommendation for general government reduces, my, I'm sorry, my recommendation for general government reduces department head requests by almost forty-five thousand dollars. Overall, the function is gonna go up by eighty-five thousand dollars or three-point-seven percent over last year. The average homeowner in East Windsor will pay two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars in F Y twenty-three, six dollars more than they're paying this year. Public safety consists of the Police Department, the Police Commission, Emergency Management, the Building Department, and Communications. So we'll start with the Police Department. Wages in the P D are requested to increase by one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars over the current year. This increase includes the newly settled dispatchers contracts, step increases for officers and dispatchers, increases for police administration and civilian supervisors, and funding for a twenty-seventh police officer who isn't really new, but he's returning from military. It does not include contractual increases for police officers, as their contract is likely to be out on June thirtieth. There is rumored to be at least one retirement, but it's not yet official, so that's not considered. Supplies are requested to go up by almost seven thousand dollars in the Police Department, which is for the replacement of their service arms. In the Building Department, I'm reducing professional services by ten thousand dollars, because that funding really hasn't been used for some number of years, it's typically returned in, in full. The dispatch line and communications was reduced by almost nine thousand dollars, and now that budget is just four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. My recommendation for public safety is fourteen-thousand-four-hundred dollars less than was requested. Overall, the public safety budget is projected to go up by almost a hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars or two-point-one percent again before contractual changes. The average homeowner would be paying five-hundred-and-ten dollars for public safety within the town's general fund, five dollars more than last year. Public Works, this, this function is a little bit misleading because it includes more than the Department of Public Works, that's a, a UKOa term, classifying everybody together. But this budget consists of the Department of Public Works, Town Property, Road Maintenance, Sanitation, and the Building Committee. So the town's costs for fire hydrants are expected to go up by at least one percent in the coming year, but both this and our estimate for water costs are still preliminary because we haven't heard from Connecticut Water what the new rate's gonna be. Our custodial contract is also expected to go up by about forty-two-hundred dollars, which just adjusts for the increase in minimum wage. Our electric rates are expected to go up by about four percent, causing a five-thousand-dollar increase. Our streetlight costs are gonna be going up by ten thousand dollars. We're expecting a slight increase in oil and heat and a significant increase of about fifty thousand dollars in our gas and diesel line. I'm recommending reducing our salt and sand budget by about twenty thousand dollars. Both our collection and disposal costs are going up for a total of four-hundred, of forty-five thousand dollars. My recommend- excuse me, one second. My recommendation for public works is thirty-nine thousand dollars less than was requested. Overall, the department is recommended to go up by almost a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars or three-point-seven-six percent. Community Services consists of Social Services, Senior Services, Recreation Libraries, the Elderly Commission, and the Historic Commission. Social Services and Senior Services are expected to go up a total of less than two thousand dollars between the two departments. Recreation Services is requesting an eight-thousand-dollar increase in professional services to cover the costs of the very popular summer concert series, a five-thousand-dollar increase in site improvements to cover topsoil for the ice skating rink at the annex, and a new diving board at East Windsor Park. And there is an increase of thirty-eight-hundred dollars in supplies to cover a water rescue board and a water mannequin for C P R and A E D training. The libraries are requested, are requesting funding increases again this year with Broadbrook Library requesting an increase of five thousand, and the Warehouse Point Library requesting an increase of fourteen-thousand-two-fifty. Both requests are included in my recommendation. Overall, the Community Services budget is expected to increase by just short of fifty thousand dollars or four-point-seven-nine percent. The average taxpayer would be paying one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars for all community services, which is four dollars more than the current year. Employee benefits in total are expected to increase by about a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars or three-point-nine-two percent. These are driven by three things: the calendar, contractual obligations, and renewal costs. First, I'll talk about the calendar. Funding for the twenty-seventh payroll is set to increase by just short of fifty thousand dollars. This line varies up and down based on the number of working days past twenty-six payrolls there are in any given year. We're on the higher end of that scale now. Contractual obligations are driving increases in FICA, the four-oh-one-A and four-fifty-seven offerings, and workers' compensation totaling a little more than twenty-five thousand dollars in new spending. We're entering year three of our health insurance agreement, and we've been told to budget a five percent renewal rate, although that could be anywhere from zero to eight percent. Under the Connecticut Prevention Partnership, which we entered into in twenty-twenty, we locked in a renewal rate not to exceed eight percent, although that has been typically somewhere in the five percent range in both of the first two years of the contract. This compares to renewal rates between twelve and twenty percent when we were under Cigna's H S A plan. We don't have final county adjusted numbers for the C P P yet, so I, and I believe the Superintendent as well, took the initial number that was provided to us by our health insurance consultant. One of the things you'll notice when looking at this graph is the jump between F Y twenty-one actuals and F Y twenty-two adopted. We budget for employees with whatever health insurance plan they're currently on, whether that be an employee, an employee plus one, or a full family plan. When we have vacant positions, they're budgeted under the assumption that the employee who's hired will take the full family plan, which costs about thirty thousand dollars per employee. But we have language in all of our employment contracts that actually encourages employees not to take medical coverage from the town at all. That's what leads to the difference between the adopted and the actual, but because the open enrollment period is after the budget process in late May and early June, we need to budget at the higher number to cover our actual costs. So to put a finer point on healthcare costs, we currently spend about one-point-seven million on healthcare. If all benefits eligible employees took that cost, it took that benefit, the cost to them would be, to us would be two-point-five million dollars. That's an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar swing, and highlights the importance of the payment in lieu of insurance language that's in each of our, our contracts. So the average taxpayer here would be paying four-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, nine dollars more than last year. Debt service. I'm recommending that debt service be increased by nine-point-seven-four percent or one-hundred-thousand dollars. This is mostly not new money, but money that I'm repurposing from the lease purchase line after last year's debt paid out. This is akin to getting a bonus from work and paying off your credit card. By paying off additional debt, we can potentially forego paying even more interest and, and increase the available funds for needed bond projects like our emergency radio system, a new roof on the high school and on town buildings, or a new community center. The average taxpayer would be paying one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for debt service, which is ten dollars more than last year. As you can see here, we currently have approximately seven-point-seven million dollars in outstanding bond indebtedness. We owe two-point-six million in principal and interest on the Broadbrook Elementary School modular project, two-point-four million for the roads and dam bond that we did in twenty-sixteen, and two-point-seven million from the twenty-thirteen clean water loan for a total of seven-point-seven billion. The town could bond as much as two-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars, which means we're, we're at roughly three percent of our available capacity. But our debt services is, is limited by town policy not to exceed more than ten percent of our expenditures, which would be roughly four million dollars. We currently spend one million dollars. That means that we could incur another three million dollars in annual debt service for infrastructure projects, but we continue to be held back by the two percent provision in the charter. That is really holding us back from investing in ourselves and addressing longstanding problems facing the community. I just wanna make that point crystal clear. So efforts have been made over time to ensure that capital improvement projects funding was, was increased by at least three percent per year. Most years, that hasn't been attained. Funding this budget at three percent allows for at least some modest sustained growth in capital projects. My recommendation is an increase in capital improvement projects of three-point-two-seven percent over last year, or an additional thirty thousand dollars. As I stated before, my recommendation also reallocates the ninety-four thousand dollars that had previously been included in this budget for lease purchases up to the debt service line. So this slide looks a little bit different than the others I've shown, because I think it tells a different story. We typically budget between nine-hundred and nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand for true capital improvement projects, plus the ninety-four thousand that we had for lease purchases. But our expenditures far outpace that. This is the result of spend-down projects at the end of each fiscal year, which have been made possible because of the robust health of our fund balance, and because oftentimes our expenditures are under budget. Rather than approaching things the same way as we have for years, I'm recommending a different approach this year and in the out years. Whatever surplus we have at the end of the year, half of that should be transferred to a C N R line for the specific purpose of the construction or renovation of a new community center. Over a period of time, this would allow us to self-finance a new facility that will allow the town to meet the needs of our growing senior population as they seek to age in place. East Windsor is ten percent older as a community than Hartford County as a whole, and with our current facilities, we are not well-positioned to provide the services that seniors will need in the coming years. We need to prepare for the shifting demand for services from our senior population. This has been an issue that's been hanging around for twenty years, and it's gone unaddressed, and what I'm suggesting we do is, is actually make a financial commitment to addressing that problem by paying for it ourselves over time and without asking the taxpayers to bond it. The average taxpayer for, for capital outlay would be paying a hundred-and-sixteen dollars or eleven dollars less than last year. So in conclusion, under the proposal put forward by Dr. Tudor and myself, the new mill rate for the town would go up by point-seven-four mills. Point-two-nine-six of those mills would go to town government, point-four-four mills would go to the Board of Education. In terms of new dollars, that would be six-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand new dollars on the town side, and just north of one million dollars on the Board of Education side. The average taxpayer on their home would be paying one-hundred-and-twelve dollars more in taxes than they do this year. Okay. I'll turn it over to Dr. Tudor, and then we'll take public comment.
Sorry, I forgot I was muted. Thank you for Selectman Bowser. As I, I have access to share screen, correct?
Yes, you do.
And actually, before I even do that, I had, in the chat, I had actually put a link for the Board of Ed. Excuse me, for the East Windsor Public School website and on the Board of Ed tab, it provides the link for the Superintendent's proposed spending plan in its entirety. So that is available, the link isn't in the chat, and I can tell you I have the link embedded in this presentation as well. Alright, so. Alright. So, good evening, it's my pleasure to present the Superintendent's proposed spending plan. My name's Patrick Tudor, Superintendent of Schools. Just two key points I wanna make before I really get started, is that this proposed plan was created to support the priorities identified in our five-year strategic plan, as well as our newly adopted Portrait of the Graduate. Our strategic plan was just adopted in November. Also, that can be found on East Windsor Public Schools' website on the Board of Ed tab, but basically outlines the work and vision for the next five years, certainly having an influence on it, on any and all spending. Also, a point of emphasis is that this draft is a starting point. Over the rest of the winter into the spring, the proposed budget will be developed via the budget workshops and collaboration with Board of Ed members and input for the community. So certainly looking forward to going through that process and having that process be natural and organic, and looking to put together a final proposal that will reflect the needs of the school and the community in March. With that, I think it's important to recognize our Board of Education members, certainly they're active, dedicated, hard-working individuals. For those that have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to them, because I know they, they work hard to be a resource, both to the school systems and the community. So before I get in the, the spending plan, I think it's important to highlight who, who is or who are the East Windsor Public Schools. And first, I just wanna start with our mission statement. East Windsor Public Schools will provide a high-quality, comprehensive, and meaningful education for all students within a safe and nurturing environment. Each student will be treated as an individual and taught to function as a member of a group, as a product member of society. We will strive for each student to be proficient in all curricular areas, our guiding principle, inspiring growth, achieving success. And with that, I also wanna point out the Portrait of the Graduate. The Portrait of the Graduate is a living document within our school system. It was created based on various input from stakeholders that included parents, students, teachers, administrators, Board of Ed members, and community members. And ultimately, through our guiding work, is the vision that we see graduates of East Windsor and what they encompass, which includes being informed lifelong learners, people that are motivated, problem solvers, open-minded, critical thinkers, individuals that are self-aware, that includes health, healthy decision-making, being resilient, reflective, socially, emotionally aware, as well as being responsible, responsible citizens, meaning that they're civic contributors, clear communicators, and culturally and ethically aware. So I can tell you this document's alive and well in each of our schools, and it's really what drives the vision for our graduates for East Windsor to ensure that they have successful post-secondary opportunities. With that, I think it's also important, especially during the pandemic, to highlight the social-emotional work of our school districts. So each, our school, so within each of our schools, we have Safe School Climate and Equity Committees, and through that work, it's focused on our social-emotional learning goals. And we embed that and implement that through our evidence-based practice, practices which include our S E L curriculum, our advisory groups which take place through each school, our restorative practices, the use of circles as far as working with students, or it's embedded in our academic curriculum, it's implemented through our home, home visit protocols, and also through student engagement, which includes our Safe School Student Leaders, all in an effort and goal in creating and sustaining a safe school climate. So the actual proposed spending plan, so within this plan, it reflects an overall proposal of a four-point-one-two-eight increase. I do wanna emphasize that this proposal is based on a traditional school year. The last three school years, I think it needs to be highlighted, have been impacted by the pandemic, and thus how schools have operated, how they have spent money, has been impacted by that as well. So when we're comparing the proposed F Y twenty-three school year to the current fiscal year of twenty-two to the the year prior to F Y twenty-one, it's not a, a fair side-by-side comparison just due to the pandemic and the needs in that time. I just wanna highlight that just in general, when people make comparisons to past school years. With that, in the budget, salaries comprise of seventy percent of the budget. The vast majority of those contracts are, are contractual through collective bargaining. And then in addition, special education comprises approximately twenty-six, twenty-six percent in the total budget. Those are mandated services, they're federally mandated. Why I can tell you, within this budget proposal, it does include two contingencies for special education private placements. Currently, our, the number of students that we have in private placements through special education are at an all-time low in the last ten years. That number can only go up. Typically, we will have families that move in district and move out of district, and so there is some change with that and some unpredictability. The budget also includes a reduction in two paraprofessionals, an increase in two certified staff, and a reallocation of administrative positions. The reallocation, I can tell you, includes elimination of a food service director and contractual services that we have in the past used to outsource our business office, in which we would be allocating or reallocating those funds for the cost of an in-house business office that would include a business manager, accounts payable, and a payroll associate. And that link there again is the link to- And that link there again is the link to the plan in its entirety, which can be also found on our school website. All right, just to highlight this, I'm just going to. So this breaks down the budget by department. So here you have each of the cost centers. And matched up with the chart. So as I just put. Highlight it, you can see that the high school represents fourteen percent moving down. The middle school is at twelve percent. Elementary school is at eleven percent. As I mentioned earlier, special education represents twenty six percent. Building and grounds represents five percent. Both curriculum, health services and cafeteria are at one percent. District wide administration, which also includes district wide technology is at twelve percent. Insurance personnel services as far as benefits, ten percent. Transportation is at five percent. So just to give a kind of overview as far as the breakdown. In each of the cost centers, personnel are broken down accordingly as far as which building or department that they are assigned. And let me just make. Sorry. So here are the dollar figures. Attached to those individual departments. One, one thing that I do want to point out here is you will see that cafeteria. Right here is indicated, but then it's taken out. We felt that was important to show the operating costs of the cafeteria. That being said, currently we meet the criteria for reimbursement for free and reduced lunch. And so through that reimbursement for the State Department of Education is zeros out the cost. So again, we wanted to show what the cost was, but then also wanted to show how it was zeroed out. So some budget variables, I think is also important to highlight. Very similar to First Selectman Jason Bowser. On the town side, the Board of Ed side is for medical insurance is also budgeted five percent increase. I can tell you projections have ranged anywhere from zero to eight percent and depends on the day. A month ago was at five percent, two months ago was at zero percent. I think most recently we got a notification was at eight percent, which was the cap. To put that in perspective, as far as the overall impact on the Board of Ed. Budget, if it did go to a an eight percent increase, the overall impact would be an increase of point three percent on the overall budget. If it went down to a zero percent, it would decrease by half a percent on the overall budget. Also, within this proposed budget, it does not include a retirements at this time. There have been no retirements announced. On average, we do. We have two certified teachers a year that retire. Sometimes it could be three, sometimes it could be one, but usually we have at least one. Anticipated savings is about thirty five to forty thousand per retirement. And that's the difference between a teacher coming in at a master step five. Versus someone retiring at the very top step. Another variable is electricity rate is increasing. However, we are in the transition to L E D lighting. I can tell you, we. We plan for a zero percent increase. However, it's unclear how those two will impact each other. As we'll be collecting data for the first time on those two variables going into next year. And then another point of emphasis is that we are either currently in or entering collective bargaining with five unions. Where we should be. For meeting the timelines, which we should would have new contracts going into next school year. So we have budgeted increases based on spending patterns. And around surrounding towns, those five unions are paraprofessionals, classified. Custodian. Cafeteria and nurses. Next year, we will have collective bargaining with school administrators and teachers. So department worksheets. So within. The proposed superintendent's. Spending plan, oh, there's departments down by departments and cost centers. And they have the worksheet. So a couple slides ago, we had this one, which was the overall. Summary by department, but then each department, like the high school, the middle school, Braebrook have each their own worksheet. Some things I just want to point out as far as establishing some greater understanding with information in there. There's a column labeled F T E. This refers to full time employees. Currently, the numbers are blank. Through this process, we will be reporting those numbers. And those be prepared for the upcoming Board of Ed workshops, and certainly those will be in for the Board of. Finance presentation. Another point of clarification, there's a line there that's indicated by non certified staff. This year, that line includes paraprofessional aides, behavior interventionist tutors. Among some other positions, but basically anyone that provides an instructional service to students, that's not a certified teacher. In past years, every single one of those groups had their own account line. To simplify reporting, we've grouped them all on one line. However, when you're making a comparison to, let's say, like FY twenty two. Year to. FY twenty three year, it's not a fair comparison because you're basically in past years, non certified referred to paraprofessionals only. So in most cases, you will see an increase and a significant increase, but based on how the reporting has changed. Also, as I indicated. Earlier, technology is included in the district wide administration cost center. Also, we have within the district wide administration cost center. There are supply lines to differentiate between those lines and the individual building A V supply lines. I just have a couple notes. So at the district wide use, it's to support and purchase infrastructure hardware. So that could be something like. Servers or something as far as hotspots, expanding Wi-Fi versus the individual supply lines are utilized to support the instructional. Technology directly at the classroom level. So often those would be things such as replacing smart boards, which are becoming antiquated. With smart viewers. And then just another point of clarification. The district has a custodial supply line, which is used to purchase supplies. For all our buildings, they're just typical things needed for day to day, like towel rolls, toilet paper, hand soap, floor finish and etc. So this is just a sample worksheet. This is the one for Braebrook School, but there's, as I indicated. In the document, you'll have one of these for every cost center. So two things I just wanted to point out, there's the F T E. I was speaking. About earlier. So as we go through this process, we will be indicating the number of employees that each of these. Numbers indicate for salaries. So for example, the teacher residency program at Braebrook would reflect. One employee. So there'd be a one there and then we would complete the other numbers going forward. And then again, as I mentioned, you have the non certified staff again. This year, that line, so right here, this line would reflect any staff member who's. Non certified, non teacher who provides a direct instructional service to students. In the past, we've had multiple lines for each category. So here you can see there is an increase. And that's just beyond your typical step increases. So budget commentary. So for each department and cost center, a budget commentary is provided that reflects. The costs as far as what's in the proposal. So the goal is to provide clarity on school spending. Why I can tell you and emphasize this is not a summary that provides a dollar for dollar. Indication and how the money is being spent, rather it provides a description for the bigger cost items on the count lines. And also provides an explanation for significant changes, whether those are increases or decreases from past budgets. To provide a historical perspective and provide the reasoning behind those changes. Also. I'll indicate if the cost is covers existing or new need and also indicate if the cost is covered by grants. So for example, this is actually the high school budget. Commentary. So in here, as I go through it, there's no indication in parentheses saying things grant funded. So I can tell you that everything in here would reflect a cost to local budget. If I go to the last bullet, you'll see increased staffing. So it's noting that this is an increase to what we currently have. For existing. And then the only other thing I just want to point out is if there's any comments regarding overall. Like building budget, that's reflecting non personnel account lines. So for, this is high school, I said. This reflects a decrease, and so that's referring to the non personnel account line. So that would be like equipment. Supply lines, dues, anything that's non salary. Grants. So there are descriptions of the grants on pages thirty nine through forty two. There's two types of grants. So we have revolving grants, which are year to year grants. So those are grants that typically we receive on yearly basis. So those are the Lions Grants, our special ed grants through the I D A, our title one, two, three and four state. Bilingual and adult education. What I can tell you is typically those, those grant monies typically stay pretty consistent or have slight. Increases year to year. I can tell you, for example, our alliance, that amount has stayed. Consistent for the, at least the last five to six years. Our I D A, our special ed grants have had slight increases year to year. One thing I do want to point out with the adult education, we belong to a collaborative. With or cooperative with Vernon. So when we draw down those funds, those go directly to. The Vernon Adult Ed Program as they're providing the service to the residents in East Windsor. So after the revolving year to year grants, we have basically the one time grant. So these are grants that have an end date. They expire. We currently have two. We have S R two and we have S R three. S R three is sometimes referred to as the American Rescue Plan S R. So I put both there just to indicate it's the same grant. So one ends next school year and then the S R three, which is the larger grant. Ends the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Because we're in the first year, as far as this current school year, twenty one, twenty two. If you look on page, I believe it's forty two with the worksheet, you'll see that. None of S R three money has been withdrawn. I can tell you that we are scheduled to. Withdraw about seven hundred thousand for the current school year. It's just not reflected because it hasn't taken place in the current school year. And the descriptions as far as how the money specifically being spent, whether it's covering supplies, professional development or staffing is indicated. Along with a dollar amount associated with that grant. So to finish, I think it's important to highlight that although this is the third school year we're in the pandemic. We're doing a lot of great things. All these pictures are from the school year. You can tell the kids are busy. Whether it's through our social emotional learning curriculum, through our advisory, our sports. Our after school activities, our student leadership. Or classroom learning. Despite the pandemic, it has felt more and more like a traditional school year. And I'll just state from being superintendent, I take great pride in that. And I'm in the buildings on a weekly basis and we're doing some really good things. To highlight that. You know, just to list some of. Achievements we've had this year. Again, we're only halfway through. So this list is going to continue to grow. So we've already started to see some academic growth. Which I think even needs to be highlighted more again, that we're still in the pandemic. We've provided leadership opportunities in which our students have taken advantage of. We're having a great sports participation. Where our students are involved with the community, we're establishing family connections. Which will only lead to positive post secondary opportunities, which is all connected. To the Portrait of the Graduate in our strategic plan. And I just want to finish with a final thought. I certainly look forward to the feedback that'll be received today. I appreciate the community's input. Look forward to bring a final product to the Board of Finance. Finance, working with our Board of Ed and community members that represents the needs of our students. As well as demonstrating fiscal responsibility and and that is a responsibility that I take very seriously. And I just appreciate the opportunity today and thank you.